Good afternoon, welcome to the 11th Regional Planning Committee meeting. Before I move forward, I would like to ask our interpreter how to access interpretation.
Good afternoon, announcement from the interpreter. To use interpretation feature, please scroll to the bottom of the Zoom screen where the meeting controls are. Check on interpretation icon and select English as your language. If you're journey through the Zoom mobile app, cellphone, tablet, phone, etc., please press ellipsis, then interpretation, and then choose your language. Finally, click on mute original audio to not hear the original Spanish low in the background. Headsets available for interpretation. If you're in the meeting room, please check out a headset from the receptionist in the lobby. Buenas tardes, aviso por parte del intérprete. Para ser uso del servicio interpretación, favor de desplazarse a la parte inferior de la pantalla de Zoom, donde aparecen los controles. Haga clic en el ícono interpretación y seleccione Spanish. Si está utilizando la aplicación móvil de Zoom, celular, tableta, etc., presione los puntos suspensivos y luego interpretación y luego el idioma. Si no desea escuchar el audio original en inglés en el fondo, por favor seleccione mute original audio, silenciar audio original. Contamos con auriculares disponibles para el servicio interpretación. Si se encuentra en la sala de reunión, favor de pedir auriculares con la naciónista en el vestíbulo. Thank you.
First, I will ask our clerk, Ms. Francesca Webb, to confirm that we have a quorum.
Thank you Chair, we do have a quorum too with East County and the county of San Diego absent.
I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home, the tribal nations-
I apologize, the county is represented, sorry about that. We okay? Okay.
I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home. The tribal nations of the San Diego region have historically faced injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples, who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most in any county in the United States, from four cultural groups: the Kumeyaï, the Diaguyana, the Luysanya, the Kupanya, and the Kowia. This land has nourished, healed, protected, and embraced them for many generations in a relationship of balance and harmony. As members of the Sandag community, we acknowledge this legacy. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. I will now call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Due to the late start and scheduling conflicts, we'll be starting with items three and four to ensure all committee members are available to vote. Then we will move into comments later. So with that, first we'll have Goldie Herbrun, who will provide an overview of the city of San Diego's request for a scope and budget amendment for their housing acceleration program cycle two grant. RPC is asked to consider this request and make a recommendation to the board.
Good afternoon Chair Downey and Regional Planning Committee members. My name is Goldie Herbrun. I'm a grants program administrator for the housing acceleration program. Item three before you today is seeking an amendment request on behalf of the city of San Diego for their affordable home development master plan. At the conclusion of this report, we will be seeking a recommendation from the committee to move on to the Board of Directors later this month. So I know we're short on time, so I'm going to bypass this overview slide of the HAP program, but you can find more information on our website about cycles one and two. So today, the city of San Diego is requesting amendment for their cycle two planning project, the Affordable Home Development Master Plan. This citywide master plan project will build upon the progress made in their first funded project in HAP cycle one by preparing prioritized city-owned sites for residential development. The original scope of this project includes activities such as conducting site-specific housing develop analyses, an operational needs-based analysis, and operational needs-based analysis in a study on facilities for homeless populations. For a little bit of project history, the city and Sandag entered into a HAP agreement in December of 2024, and just last month, the city requested their first amendment for this project. The request before you today is seeking a scope and budget adjustment to accommodate a new incompatible use study. The city's amendment, if approved today, will adjust the budget by reallocating $150,000 from existing tasks four, five, and six to a new incompatible use study, which is added, that's task seven. If you want to look at your attachment for this item, there's a schedule, scope, and budget table with redlined strikeout with the proposed changes. The scope change will involve reducing the original number of prioritized city-owned sites to be prepared in order to add an economic study that will address environmental justice issues the city faces. The objectives of the economic study will be to identify incompatible land uses, incentivize new affordable home developments on privately-owned sites, and address environmental justice concerns in low-resource areas. The proposed scope changes are a direct response to the city's general plan environmental justice element policies that were adopted by city council after the original grant application was submitted to Sandag. As for a grant distribution update on this project, only 1% of the grant award has been spent to date. This shouldn't be surprising though. HAP cycle two grantees have only gone through one cycle of submitting invoices, so it's no surprise that expenditures are low at this time. The requested budget changes do not change the grant amount at all, nor does it change the commitment made by the city for their match. If the project is not approved, the city will continue to identify opportunities for affordable housing development on public lands as originally identified in the scope, but they would not be pursuing the economic study needed to identify and phase out those incompatible uses in environmental justice communities. With that, that concludes my presentation for item three. City staff are here and available for project questions if you have any, and I can answer any grant-related questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you Goldie. Francesca, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you Chair, we do. We have two public comments on this item. First will be Truth, and Truth will be followed by Blair Beekman.
This is really easy. Note anything the city of San Diego asks for. I understand the different issues of all of these neighborhoods, but I see several issues. Number one is property rights. Why is San Diego trying to take people's right to their own business? I'm okay with the city trying to incentivize businesses to move if they want to, but just because some people in government declare a neighborhood an environmental justice community or a promised zone does not give them the right to a type of indirect eminent domain. This item proves that San Diego can't even keep its word. Its own regulations are now being expanded outside of their own self-created zones. And if San Diego is truly concerned about environmental justice, it's interesting how they never say anything about Mexico sewage that affects Nester and Otay Mesa. They've done nothing for their people on many fronts. This whole change of scope is really about the city trying to meet the arena housing quotas and to get paid for it in increased property taxes. Notice their outreach did not include the business or property owners. That's kind of their SOP. This isn't much a scam as calling the ugly stag pack government projects affordable when it'll likely be much less than 20%. That's anywhere close to the current rents of older, single-family homes that don't require the middle class to subsidize people's rents. The city of San Diego should take this $150,000 and instead go put it toward fixing some of the major potholes in Miramesa, Curdie Mesa, or Claremont it's been neglecting for years, decades in fact. If the council hadn't kept giving themselves raises to the tune of almost $200,000 a year, they'd have even more money to actually achieve something people need, something tangible, not profiting off corporate developments. And I'm sure, again, I'm going to say it, political unions. I'm sure there's a piece of that puzzle in there. There always is with San Diego. Thank you.
I think our next speaker will be Blair Beekman.
That was an interesting critique, Blair Beekman. I'm going to be Mr. Positive and talk about the ideas of... I brought to this board many times, and I live in San Diego, so San Diego is working on their housing issues. And the recent council meetings, they've made a very specific point of city government staff that permanent housing is actually doing some really remarkable things. It's really housing people in large numbers of low-income communities. So I'm nothing but impressed that you want to work on these items, try to build really truly affordable housing. If you can be doing that, it's really important. And I'm seeing, I'm learning the ways to do that for the first time, and it's nice. It's more than just building shelter. And so this is the organic whole of good work, so thank you. I continuously come up here to mention the ideas of mixed-income housing and what that can do for the future of local neighborhoods, but we're too afraid to have those conversations for our local neighborhoods. When basically, I think mixed income is pretty much mandated by 2029, I think we should be making those efforts now and starting some really interesting work with Tijuana, who is having serious development things going on right now. Why not work towards a mixed-income future and address things like what's going on in Mexico City, where it's not just the American gringos, it's the real estate market that's incredibly driving up prices and boxing everyone out? Why don't we start considering mixed-income ideas with Tijuana as a viable solution, as a decent solution? And just make that a regular part of our conversations? And I think we'd be a great example to the state, and if not the world and the country. Good luck in your efforts. I keep saying it here, good luck in your efforts, thanks.
Thank you, that concludes the public comments. Okay, public comments are closed. Does any member have a comment or a question on this item?
No question, but I make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? You know what, we're going to have to wait till the county comes back. They've just stuck away for one moment, so... We still have a quorum? Oh, I've been informed we still have a quorum, so the motion carried, all voting aye. Thank you very much. Okay, back to Cody, thank you. She'll provide an overview of the city of San Diego's request for a scope and budget amendment for their Smart Growth Incentive Program grant. RPC is asked to consider this request and make a recommendation to the board.
Great, thank you so much. So I'm back again. It's a city of San Diego amendment as well, but this is for a different grant program. It's the Transnet Smart Growth Incentive Program. And just a note, this item was presented and unanimously recommended for approval by ITalk on Wednesday, July 9, 2025. We are now seeking your recommendation to move forward to the board. Thank you so much. Okay, just for, in the interest of time, I'll just breeze through the history of Smart Growth. You can check all that information out on the Sandag website on our grants funding page. So, the city of San Diego is a grantee requesting the Smart Growth Incentive Program project amendment for their East Village Green Park Phase One project. Civic San Diego is also listed on here because they are the project administrator. I work with these folks to administer the Smart Growth Incentive Program. This is a not-for-profit organization formed by the city of San Diego, and they implement development services in downtown, in the downtown area. So this project is located in East Village. This monumental capital project is a construction project that will build a 4.1-acre multi-block community park that is bounded by 13th Street, F Street, 14th Street, and G Street. The original scope of this work includes the construction of Phase One improvements, which include 1.2 acres of open space, a community center, two cafes, a performance pavilion, a children's play area, all the things. They're also relocating two historical buildings as a result of the project. This is the largest urban park project ever endeavored in downtown San Diego, and it's important to note that the Smart Growth Incentive Program grant award makes up only 1.3% of the overall project budget. The grant award was intended to be used for the 14th Street pedestrian improvements, which advance the following Smart Growth principles: one, improving the public realm, creating great spaces for the community, encouraging private Smart Growth projects, and increasing access to transit. This park is located adjacent to both bus and rapid bus routes, and it's two blocks from the trolley. So for the project history, this grant was entered into agreement in April 2019, and just like every Smart Growth construction project, they're given a 3.5-year performance period. In October of 2022, this project was granted its first amendment, extending the project by 34 months. This first amendment was granted because there were significant permitting delays, and the city needed to attain additional funds due to increased construction costs. In May of this year, Civic San Diego came to us for a second schedule extension. They asked for 12 months. This second amendment also includes a scope reduction, which I'll talk about in the next slide. If approved, the project will complete construction in August of 2026. So again, the second amendment request is twofold. It's asking for a 12-month time extension. That's due to the unforeseen discovery of contaminated soils, which they had to address. They also had design and permitting challenges. And then there's a scope reduction that is needed, that needs to take out the park cafes and the performance pavilion as a result of an administrative oversight. The project has expended 38% of funds so far, 62% remain. If the project is not awarded, the Civic San Diego can invoice for the entire project, but per the terms of the agreement, we cannot pay out their final invoice until they deliver a park project. With that said, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you so much.
To public comments, given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to reduce a public comment to one minute on this item. Do we have any public comments, Francesca?
Thank you Chair, we have two. First will be Truth, followed by Blair Beekman.
Quick internet search from Voice of San Diego. Let's see, the settlement of this, the divorce of Civic San Diego from the city. 2015 lawsuit led to more than a year of negotiations between city and labor union leaders about the future of the unique nonprofit. Let's see. Union leaders and community activists had their allegations, but they finally notched a victory in their years-long effort to dial back Civic San Diego's powers in an era when their power at City Hall has peaked, coinciding with a veto-proof Democratic majority on the council. Their victory pays the way for a more progressive city council to weigh in on major downtown developments, making it likelier that hotels or construction projects strike labor-friendly PACs. When this agency before is the reason that there was so much development in downtown, why it looks the way it does today. And I have a lot to say about this project actually, because it's a waste of money. They're shutting down a lane, and there's already a park two blocks from where it's at. Fault Line Park, you can go there and see it for yourself. And then you said there's a performance pavilion, and then there isn't one in the May letter. Which one is it?
Thank you, our final speaker will be Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman. I work a lot with tech accountability, and there is not one iota of a mention of technology involved with this project. It's called a smart city growth. Isn't that supposed to imply the use of technology, our smart technology future? Yet there's not a mention of technology here, which may suggest, to myself suggests, we just have an ongoing problem how to talk about our technology in our local community. You guys are developing this innovative future where you're going to have a ton of new tech involved, and you're not at all mentioning it here. And it's tech that we have to be very concerned about. I'm not saying we can't have it, but it has to be questioned. It has to be addressed. And you guys don't want to do that in the public process, and you're afraid to. Your decency and good manners won't allow you to. It's a decent thing to do to not talk about it. We have to be able to make these conversations open and clear and accountable and public. So please don't be afraid of it. Take the chance, trust, we'll do it together, thanks.
Give it your much, your time is expired.
That concludes the public comments. Do any members have comments or questions?
Thank you for the presentation, and I'm all for a park. I think it's a very congested, heavily populated area, so a park is a nice thing. I wasn't clear however, why they made the changes to remove the pavilion, the performance pavilion, and the cafe, and Bark Bart.
In 2022, the San Diego City Council decided to remove those two elements due to insufficient funding. And so this was brought up in ITalk as well. These two elements do not touch the transportation or like what was intended for this original project, so it doesn't really touch upon the scope of this grant. But those two things were the grantee's decision to remove, and it wasn't originally requested to be removed during the First Amendment process, which is why we have to ameliorate the issue now.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions? Yes?
Chair, first I'll start by moving the item, but thank you to Vice Mayor Martinez for asking that as well. So from my perspective, it was before my time in city council, but the scope had already been changed for some time. So although it's the action here, it's really just correcting this scope to match up with where the city had already decided its limited funding could work for the project, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion to approve, do I have a, to recommend? And do I have a second? I'll take second from, thank you, our county's representative. Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously with those members present.
Okay. So we can take a breath. We can now continue with the rest of the agenda in order. Item number one, non-agenda public and member comment, and you are back to having... What? Okay. Item number one, non-agenda public and member comment. Francesca, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Thank you Chair, we do. We'll start with Truth and then go to Blair Beekman.
Instead of the poem I was going to read, I'm going to address corruption. Because I have an issue, aren't parks city issues, not Sandag issues? Why is the transportation agency funding city parks? That's their responsibility. And we're just talking about East Village. East Village needs safety, not a park. We have drug addiction going on there, and it's horrible. That should have been the first thing addressed five years ago. I know people that have lost their business because of the crime that goes on there. There's been shootings in broad daylight. Maybe San Diego should prioritize the area called the Bottoms before they think about parks. And then you guys didn't have any issue with San Diego waiting over three years to ask Sandag permission to change the scope of their project? I heard Cesar Javier call San Diego crooks. I think, I understand why. I mean, I've done enough of those meetings. There's a reason I don't, because they're a waste of time. And I'm going to give more of that story I was reading. It says Civic San Diego clashed with community groups, especially unions, within months of its creation in 2012. Assemblywoman Lorena Gonzalez, really super corrupt, introduced state legislation in 2015 to try to hand Civic San Diego's downtown development authority back to the city council. That came, then came former Civic San Diego board member Murtaza Boxamusa's 2015 lawsuit. Well guess what? That guy was collecting a big check and not reporting. Oh sorry, was he one of the people reporting it? I don't know. But he works for the county now, I wonder why he got the job? Because he's part of the political union. It says, he wasn't seeking cash, he wanted to overhaul Civic San Diego, and his lawsuit ended up being labor's most successful weapon. So we have a lot of corruption going on in our local government. We can see who's actually running things behind the scenes. Let's see. Oh wow, this is actually really, I mean, I was just, I wasn't looking for this type of information, but when you can add it to what came out recently from iNews source in National City with the fake affordable housing unit, it was a slumlord. The slumlord was the union. So you can see, this is a much bigger picture, and just like I said, that's the tip of the iceberg of why things have been going on here at Sandag and elsewhere. Thank you.
I think our final speaker will be Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. I'm sorry to be a little strong on the previous item. There is an important goal of being accountable and trusting that process, and it's, and building community. It's not dictates, it's not you guys wanting and we have to take. It is a give and take, it is a process. It really has to be respected, and you guys don't know how to do that at all with technology. You have a continual bad habit to not be honest about technology and its placement in our community. And we have to learn patterns that it can be okay, and it can trust community dialogue. Good luck in those efforts to do that. I sit here, it's my main focus why I'm here each week, is for that. Good luck how we can do it. With that said, I missed on my previous non-agenda public comment for the Board of Directors meeting, I, there's such an urgency of what's going on with ICE issues in LA and San Francisco right now. I think in San Diego, we really are starting to ask that they do not over-militarize their future ICE raids here in San Diego. I think we have a way to create a continuation of that, and really make sure that can continue. It's from that, I hope we can, that can grow to Los Angeles and to San Francisco. And we have to start doing that now. ICE has made a big, you know, presentation with their MacArthur Park things this past weekend. It brought on what happened on Monday up in Ventura County. The raids got a little overly violent, when they didn't have to. And so the police, the ICE, I mean, have to really bring it down. And we're here in San Diego trying to ask and work on those ways to bring it down just a notch or two. Good luck how we can do that together in this state. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes the public comment, Tris. Okay, now on to the consent agenda. Francesca, do we have any public comments on that?
Chair, we do not have any public comments on consent.
Okay. Do we have any member comment requests? No? Okay. Where is my agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Second, thank you very much. Please vote. Yes.
That motion does pass with three yeses and one abstention.
Okay. Now we're going to item number five. Courtney Becker? There we go. Will present an update on the Regional Beach Sand Project III and feedback received on the draft Phase One report.
Thank you Chair, and good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Kim Smith, I'm a senior regional planner here at Sandag. I'm joined here with my colleague Courtney Becker to present the Regional Beach Sand Project III Phase One results. If you can recall, Courtney presented on the history of Sandag Shoreline Management Program back in, excuse me, March of this year, where she touched briefly on the Regional Beach Sand Project III. Today Courtney will give a deeper dive, a deeper overview of the project and results as Phase One nears completion. And now I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Thanks Kim, good afternoon. Before we get further into the project, I wanted to just give a quick reminder of the program in case some of you weren't here during that March 7th meeting. So I'd like to start with- March 7th meeting. So I'd like to start with the working group. The Shoreline Preservation Working Group was established back in the 1980s and is Sandag's longest-standing working group. The working group consists of all the coastal jurisdictions with an elected official from each, including a few members here today, being Mayor Ellers and Deputy Mayor Martinez, as well as representatives from the US Navy and Port of San Diego. Additionally, the working group is supported by community and technical advisors, including representatives from Scripps, California Coastal Commission, State Parks, Surf Rider Foundation, and a slew of others who all have a common interest in how do we maintain our beaches for our residents and future visitors alike? Two of the largest projects that have been completed through the program have been Regional Beach Sand Projects I and II. I'll also be referring to this as RBSP. The first RBSP was completed in 2001. It placed 2.1 million cubic yards of sand on 12 beaches in seven coastal cities here in San Diego, and in total, it cost about $18 million. Fast forward 11 years, Regional Beach Sand Project II was completed. This project was smaller in scale, as it only placed 1.5 million cubic yards of sand on eight beaches in five coastal cities, but because of inflation, the price did increase to about $26 million. We consider these one-off projects, because they were not performed in any regular maintenance cycle, but rather when funding became available. So why do another regional nourishment project? Another notable program that the Regional Shoreline Management Program manages is the Regional Shoreline Monitoring Program, which was established back in 1996. This program is funded by our local coastal cities to perform bi-annual shoreline monitoring surveys to measure beach width change and shore zone volume change over time. Of the 29 years worth of data that we have collected through this program, it shows that nourishment projects work best when they're performed every five to 10 years to maintain our beaches' width. I can tell you the numbers of why the beaches are eroding, but what better way than showing you these images? On the top, you'll see on the left-hand side, it's Grandview and Lucadia, and on the right, Oceanside Boulevard, both taken in 2014, so two years post RBSP II sand placement. Fast forward 10 years, the beaches have completely eroded away and are gone. Because of this noticeable erosion, and since it's been 13 years since the last Regional Beach Sand Project, the Shoreline Preservation Working Group directed Sandag to initiate another nourishment effort, being Regional Beach Sand Project III. Sandag began this project by mirroring the phases of RBSP II, starting with Phase One, which is the preliminary planning activities. This phase has been funded by the participating coastal cities and will be completed next month. Phase Two will focus on obtaining the environmental clearances and permits, as well as engineering and design, and Phase Three is to perform the construction and post-monitoring surveys. Shortly after we initiated Phase One of RBSP III, the cities of Dana Point and San Clemente reached out to Sandag and asked to participate, arguing that their cities would also benefit from a regional nourishment effort, since they are also located in the Oceanside Litoral Cell, same as many of our North County cities. Now, let me take a step back. A litoral cell is a self-contained compartment in which sand circulates. If you look on the map above, you'll see that there are three litoral cells here in Southern California: the Oceanside, Mission Bay, and Silver Strand. The Oceanside Litoral Cell starts at Dana Point and extends down to La Jolla Point. So generally, the sand will stay within this compartment. Understanding that nourishing the entire litoral cell would be beneficial, not only for the cities of Dana Point and San Clemente, but also our North County cities, and being aligned and seeking future funding for our regional nourishment effort, both cities were incorporated into the Phase One preliminary planning activities. And now on to the results of the draft report. Let's start with the receiver sites. So for both Southern Orange County and San Diego, there are 18 proposed receiver sites placing 5.8 million cubic yards of sand. If you want to separate that, the San Diego region has 15 proposed sites totaling 4.3 million cubic yards of sand. And I want to pause. That is three times the size of what RBSP II was. Massive. The Southern Orange County area has three sites at 1.5 million cubic yards of sand. Moving on to the economic analysis results. So this was performed using methodologies similar to the Army Corps of Engineers and our other federal partners to create a benefit-cost analysis. This way, we can evaluate the economic value comparing the expected costs and benefits. Thus, you will create a BCR, so a benefit-cost ratio. And in general, anything above a 1 is considered a cost-effective project. Overall, for RBSP III incorporating both San Diego and Southern Orange County, the BCR is 5.7, so it's considered a very cost-effective project. If you want to just pull out the San Diego portion, it's an 8.1, so an extremely cost-effective project. The report estimates that by nourishing the 15 beaches here in San Diego, it will generate $1.6 billion over the next 10 years. And I wanted to pull out this quote, because I felt it was important that you all hear, that the report concludes that there is a need to maintain San Diego's beaches to sustain its economy. That's a pretty impactful statement when we're considering initiating another project. Another component to the report is it includes lessons learned. As I mentioned, we have performed two Regional Beach Sand Projects, so there were many lessons to have been learned. I just wanted to touch on a few here today. The first is, how can we expand the longevity of these nourishment projects? The report recommends using coarser grain-sized sand when applicable, and designing the fill footprints to be longer and narrower, rather than shorter and fatter footprints, to expand longevity. The second is to develop a programmatic approach, rather than one-off projects. This way, we can streamline the environmental clearances and permits, as well as reduce costs and perform these projects adventiously before we're in a dire situation with our beaches. The third is, the report looks into exploring ways that we can reduce the cost of the hopper dredge. Now, that's a special dredge that can only be used for this scale and magnitude of a project for nourishment efforts. All of the hopper dredges are located on the East Coast, and one of the most costly parts of doing these types of nourishment projects is just moving the dredge from the East Coast down through the Panama Canal and over to the West Coast. So the report looks at, what would it look like we were to purchase, or have a long-term lease with one of these dredges? Or, how can we have a West Coast dedicated dredge, so that is parked out here on the West Coast, thus reducing the travel costs for us here in San Diego? The last item in the lessons learned was that the report recommends the installation of a sand retention device in an appropriate location to retain sand for longer periods of time. Through the regional shoreline management monitoring program, the data shows that there are several areas here in San Diego that are considered erosion hotspots, meaning when sand's placed in those areas, it essentially washes away. So, one of those areas is in the city of Oceanside. Recognizing this, they have initiated their own pilot sand retention project, being ReBeach. At the June 5th Shoreline Preservation Working Group meeting, the working group members recommended to adopt ReBeach as the region's pilot sand retention project. Not only would this satisfy the component of our Regional Beach Sand Project III Phase I's planning activities, but it would also satisfy one of Sandag's longstanding shoreline policy documents, being the regional sand retention policy. That policy recommends that a pilot sand retention project be adopted for the region. So, what would that mean for Sandag? That means that we would be aligned in looking at future funding opportunities, as well as streamlining our future phases for this project. Now, moving on to the costs. I'm first going, in total, it's looking at $260 million to perform this type of project for Southern Orange County and San Diego. And I'm going to now explain the line items, and then discuss why the cost is so high. Starting with the dredge, as I mentioned, the mobilization of the dredge is incredibly costly. It's $20.4 million just to move the dredge out here. The hard costs are estimated at $160 million, and that's boots-on-the-ground construction. Our soft costs are our supportive costs, so environmental clearances and permits, estimated at $5.4 million. And lastly, the contingency, that is estimated at $63 million. Excuse me. So there's a few reasons why this is estimated so high. First, the magnitude. This is a massive project. As I mentioned, it's three times the size of RBSP II. So the more sand that we place, the more it's going to cost. The second being inflation. Inflation has increased drastically since 2012, so just the cost of the materials has gone up a lot as well. And the last being the contingency, you may notice that that percentage is at 35%. We have checked in with our partners at the Army Corps of Engineers, and this is an appropriate percentage at this point of the planning for the project, as they would for another regional project. So, there's just so many unknowns that we don't know between now and when we'd actually implement the project. So it's a safer bet to have a larger contingency percentage. But as we move forward and getting closer to actually performing the project, we'll be able to refine that number, because we'll be able to answer some of those unknown costs that we will inevitably face, thus reducing the total cost for the project. However, regardless, this can't just be a local cost share. This needs to be a state, federal, and local share. So, earlier this year, Sandag applied for state funding through the Department of Boating and Waterways for Phase II. We applied for $5.2 million, and will be notified in the summer of next year, so '26, if we were successful in that grant funding opportunity. And if successful, there will be a 15% non-state match requirement. Additionally, we have begun conversations with the US Army Corps of Engineers to explore ways that we can expand their already-existing coastal storm damage reduction project. Many of you know that last year, the cities of San Clemente, Solana Beach, and Encinitas all received sand through the Army Corps of Engineers. How can we work at expanding this? Because as I mentioned, the dredge is going to come all the way out here, through that incredibly high cost, nourish those three beaches, and then sail away. How can we expand that to be more effective in nourishing the entire region? So, through WERA 2024, the work for the San Diego and Orange County investigations was authorized. Sandag has begun working with the Army Corps on incorporating that into their work plan, and provided a letter of intent, being the local sponsor. As we move forward in those conversations, we'll be working with participating coastal cities to draft up MOUs, which would be the requirement to initiate these investigations with the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, on to the comments. So after the June 5th working group meeting, we released the report for a 45-day comment period amongst the participating coastal cities. During that time, we received over 150 comments on the report. We have been working diligently at incorporating and revising the report accordingly, and today, I'm going to talk about a few emerging prevailing themes amongst those comments. So the first, there were several recommendations to revise footprints to particular beaches to align better with cities' shoreline management goals. The second is, there was an overwhelming emphasis on having RBSP III be a programmatic project and not a one-off project. This way, we can streamline the environmental documents, reduce costs, and again, perform this proactively, rather than when the beach is virtually eroded away. The third was, there were concerns about the potential impacts to lagoons by doing a project at this magnitude. So, recommendations were made to involve the lagoon managers in the design, sand quantity, and placement for this project. And lastly, there were a few questions on what the end result for the BCR for particular beaches were. So some cities wanted to better understand the beach attendance data that was used to provide the results for the economic analysis and understand the methodologies. So what are our next steps? Right now, we're finalizing the document. We will be releasing the final document next month in August, and moving forward, we will be actively looking and applying to any and all grant funding opportunities for Phase II as we move forward. We will be anxiously awaiting to hear from the state next year if we were successful, and also pursuing to have those conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers, to keep moving forward and have them expand and incorporate their investigations for the San Diego and Southern Orange County into their work plan. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
At this point, thank you very much. Courtney, Francesca, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Chair. We have two. Truth, followed by Blair Beekman.
My comment is, I'm hungry. $2.4 billion in tourism dollars because of the beaches. How much is an Imperial Beach? Do you think their tourism has generated enough money to pay for Sandag's sand replenishment program? Should they not receive some kind of environmental hardship discount? Because the beach attendance data will be skewed due to those existing conditions. Some will argue, their beach is more important than other beaches, just because they're unfairly able to attract more tourists. Program Manager Keith Beer said, "The Shoreline Preservation Group addresses water quality, everything that touches the ocean. So where are the pollution solutions?" From Sandag. "How does more pollution from another border crossing fit that goal?" And the presentation said, "There's a need to maintain Sandago's beaches to sustain its economy. Is Sandag in the business of saying that or ensuring that for every community? Maybe we need some water nourishment. Buying a dredge makes more sense than racking up more bond debt on failed projects like toll lanes or border crossings. Not sure how much it actually costs, but what if Sandago County had its own and rented it out to other California areas? It could maybe partner with Orange County on the cost." The July 1993 sand retention plan was to do one big dump with little maintenance, but that didn't happen. It was another failed sand up prediction. In reality, none of this erosion is due to the theory of climate change. Erosion is normal. What is not normal is government and military building all of these structures in the ocean, which is contributing to sand disappearing. And it's interesting that Sandag has the ability to provide 50% of the payment for the federal agreement in cash. Where do you guys keep the bank of our tax dollars at? I'd like to know, just curious. What is a sand retention device? Where does the sand come from? At least explain how dredging works. And something sandy, I have a sneaking suspicion of, the county is going to approve the Cottonwood Sand Mine, so Sandag can use the back country to benefit coastal North County beaches and let them rake in more tourist dollars. We'll see. I don't know. I don't have any insight on that, although I usually know how it goes with that stupid Board of Supervisors. But my last question is, when does National City get to worry about sand? Come on. Inequity.
I think our next speaker is Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. Thanks a lot for this item. Good luck that we can work on ICE issues together now and not wait till the end of summer. That's an important distinction to make. With that said, this item, you talk about, you come to this board often and talked about sand issues, and I've felt it's always been a bit lax and blasé, but I do am trusting that you have a very specific purpose in your continual sand buildup issues that you've done in the past. This is talking about $20 million in dredging, and that's new. I haven't heard that before. So, boy, good luck how you can address it. I know, I've been visiting Maui in the state of Hawaii, the west side, and man, they are having incredibly terrible issues with sand erosion. I mean, they have really expensive hotels that are just totally eroding away. And I'm interested to see what sort of work you can do with them. It seems like a natural fit to want to be working with them towards solutions. It is close to the Hina area, and, you know, it questions, you know, the fires happening, just the whole incidence there. It adds an additional urgency to try to work on it together if you can. There's a lot of turtle population in the Delmar area, in the Oceanside area, where you talked about, lagoon areas. They're so fragile and sensitive an ecosystem there, that it creates a really important sea life. Good luck in addressing that sensitivity for this issue and with low-sand corridor issues. These are the things that are important to me and how to think of it. And good luck in just... And good luck in just offering an important sensitivity and how to talk about this. Thank you.
That concludes the public comments. Thank you. Public comments are closed. Are there any member questions or comments at this time?
I have a comment.
Please.
So thank you, Courtney, for the presentation. I feel your passion, and that's really exciting. I think, you know, this is great and I support it, of course. But in Delmar, we have had our neighbors receive sand replenishment, which has benefited Delmar in a great way, and I know how much it's benefited both of those cities. However, one of the unintended consequences is a buildup of sand in the San de Gito Lagoon. We've reached out to Assemblywoman Tasha Borner, Senator Schiff, Senator Levin. They've done tours with us to actually see the amount of sand that is accumulated in the lagoon, so much so that in certain times of the day, people can literally stand in the middle of the lagoon on sand. And I'm concerned about the eco-disruption. It's fragile. And according to what I think I know, so you could probably correct me on this, but the Corps of Engineers was scheduled to evaluate this every two years. We're about at the one-year mark. We can't wait another year. So my point is that we need to also be prepared and be able to intervene when unattended consequences occur. I'm very supportive of it. I've seen what it's done for our neighbors and what we've benefited, but this is a downside to the sand replenishment. So before more is put on the beach, it would be nice that we would have some remedy to be able to remove the sand that's there, to monitor it more often, so this accumulation doesn't occur, because I'm sure we don't even know the ecological damage that it's done up to this point. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have several. Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
I just wanted to build on that point. I think on Slide 14, I think you were addressing that with your third bullet over, right? Isn't that the, consider the impacts the lagoons that may occur on Slide 14? Isn't that the intent of that? Is the potential blocking? Because not only down in Delmar, at Barakitos and Salao have similar issues occurring.
Yeah, that's correct.
I was just noting, though, that the Corps of Engineers is scheduled a year from now to monitor, and that's just too long. I bet you would agree on the Penasquitos.
Yeah, I'm agreeing, and I'm, I think the feedback that staff, and I'd like staff, Courtney, to address that.
Yeah.
You got that feedback.
Sorry. Yes, we've received a lot of comments actually from the city of Delmar about the concern to potential lagoon managers. And we did also circulate this to a few lagoon managers to provide their input as well. With Regional Beach Sand Project Two, there was also that concern. What ended up happening is we, there was money set aside to be given to the lagoon managers to dredge out their lagoons when this need arose. So that is something that we will be working closely with, and I'm sure Kim would be actually able to expand on it since she's our lagoon manager here.
I think the opportunity exists as we move into Phase Two. When we, you know, dive into the permitting, I do feel assured that not only lagoon managers are going to be vocal, but also when we permit this project, I think the resource agencies, that would likely be a requirement that there's either a robust monitoring component and/or, you know, an endowment set aside for some of these lagoon managers to be able to deal with it, so.
I have a couple of questions. First, I was actually part of Sandag and worked the entire issue for Two. And one of the things that we learned, as this report is showing, is that it is so costly to get the dredge, but more importantly, there wasn't availability. At that time, they were off in Australia. There was all kinds of conflicts just trying to get the few dredges available. So my question is, and at the time we asked, maybe we should just buy one or do something to avoid that long wait. And if we're talking about maybe doing it more frequently, then it's going to be even worse if we have to get in this long queue. So does the report make recommendations in terms of where it would be best to stay a dredge? Because that's one of the big questions. It does make sense to do the West Coast. I'm not sure how Hawaii fits into it, but at the very least, up and down the coast of California, maybe up to, all the way up to Washington. So is there discussions about what makes sense?
So this report doesn't go into that detail. However, I do want to add that at the September Shoreline Preservation Working Group meeting, we will be having a dredging panel discussion while having a dredging industry expert come speak, Army Corps of Representative, and Moffin and Nichol, who wrote a report on the feasibility of owning or having or purchasing a West Coast dredge. So at that meeting, we're going to talk about all of those questions in greater detail as well.
Yes, Mayor Morrison?
Yeah, a couple of things. I know back before the 2014 projects, we were asking basically that same question on why, you know, we got a West Coast and we got an East Coast, and there is something besides the Florida beaches and Virginia Beach and those areas. You know, so why all the dredges are back there since the majority of the money for sand replenishment is federal money that comes into all these projects? Why are there no dredges on the West Coast? And, you know, that has not been a priority, but that was being asked 15 years ago here, not in this board meeting, board office, but in the other board that we had, was being asked, and nothing has changed in that time. So that's one thing. The other thing is, I've noticed up here, you're also requesting beach attendance data. And so as you said, there's three distinct different areas that are designated. And certainly for the southern one, there's got to be an asterisk on that attendance because I'm assuming when you're asking for beach attendance, you're looking for human attendance, not bacteria attendance. And so it makes quite a difference when the beaches are closed, you know, for several years at a time. Thank you.
And I have one further question. One of the speakers asked the question. At this point, the idea of doing some kind of beach retention, I'll say apparatus, but whatever we might look at doing to try and keep more of the sand at the areas we want them. At this point, do we honestly believe the Coastal Commission agreed to any of this? I haven't heard any discussion on what we think policy-wise we could do in that area without having a lot of blowback.
So the city of Oceanside is working on that individually right now. I think they also just received a grant funding from the Coastal Commission to initiate that, so they are actually supportive of this project. They don't have funding for future phases of actually implementing the project, but they are working pretty diligently on that. It's an interesting design because it's more of a nature-based type of sand retention device, where it's a living speed bumps, and they did an international call for firms to put bids in. And it's actually a company from the Golden Coast in Australia who did something similar in Australia that's been really, really beneficial and hasn't had impacts. That project that they will be doing in Oceanside, if and when it's implemented, there's a lot of road stops. So if they encounter any issues or if they're seeing any negative impacts to the really aggressive monitoring that they will have to perform, there is a clause that they will have to pull the project out. So it isn't installed and it's permanently there. There are a lot of regulations and monitoring on that project as well.
Thank you very much. Did anybody have any other further questions? Not at this time. Okay. Well, this was just an informational item. We don't take action. This concludes today's meeting, and thank you to the production team and Francesca for the meeting support, and for all of you for being flexible because we had a rapid pace at the beginning of the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Regional Planning Committee is scheduled for Friday, October at 1:00 p.m. But I will tell you, when we first started, when I took over chairing this, meeting only three, four times a year doesn't make any sense. So I'm just letting you know, there could be a change to that. But right now, the next one is scheduled is in October. October 3rd at 1:00 p.m. Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned.